I'd like to call to order the regular meeting agenda on Monday, November 21st, 2016. Would you please join Councilman Pizzillo for the pledge allegiance and stay standing for the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty Father, please look over this dais. Please give us wisdom so we can make good decisions on the city's behalf. Also, please put your healing hand over all of those serving in uniform throughout the world and here in the city. Make sure they're safe. And another little ad, John Campbell, who also needs our help right now in prayers, who's fighting some health issues right now, please, I ask that you speed his recovery along, and I name, amen.
Thank you, Councilman Pizzillo, thinking about Councilman Campbell. And we're going to need a motion in a second to excuse her this evening, so do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion from Councilman Lortano, Vice Mayor Lortano, and a second from Councilman Holman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. So let's go right on to the communication. The first item is to recognize, and it's sorry that Wally can't be here tonight, but Councilman Pizzillo and Campbell by the White Tanks Rotary. So I'd like to introduce David Lesnick with White Tanks Rotary, who would be doing the presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. It's my honor to be able to make this presentation tonight. And this presentation of a Paul Harris Fellow Award is in recognition of Rotary Foundation's way of expressing its appreciation for substantial contribution to its humanitarian and educational programs. It is named for our founder, Paul Harris, a Chicago lawyer who started Rotary International with three business associates in 1905. We move closer to a world of peace and goodwill today as Joe Pizzillo and Wally Campbell become Paul Harris Fellows. Their gifts to Rotary's Foundation educational and humanitarian programs is a commitment to peace and to a better life for people across the world whom they may never meet. This is truly a selfless action. Joe and Wally, it is because of gifts like yours that the Rotary Foundation is able to carry out an array of programs that achieve beneficial changes in our world: improved living conditions, increased food production, better education, wider availability of treatment and rehabilitation for the sick and disabled, new channels for the flow of international understanding, and brighter hopes for peace. In becoming Paul Harris Fellows, Joe and Wally join a remarkable company of persons throughout the world, all recognized for their devotion to the ideal of goodwill, peace, and understanding. It is the goal of Rotarians the world over and one that Joe and Wally clearly share. It gives me great pleasure for Joe and Wally Pizzillo, Joe Pizzillo and Wally Campbell, to present you with the emblems of appreciation given to Paul Harris Fellows. We congratulate you and thank you for your commitment to the programs of Rotary Foundation. Madam Mayor, would you please accept for Wally?
I certainly will. First, I'd like to give a round of applause for them.
Uh, yeah, pin joke.
Have to pin joke.
Seal style, please.
That's why you don't have to pin the mayor.
Pin the trident on him.
Here?
Oh, I've got yours.
Stay on your good side.
Well, congratulations, Joe.
Thank you.
And how about everybody texting Wally and congratulating her tonight? And it's a great honor, and we're very proud of both of you, so thank you. All right, so the next communication item is an update by our Finance Director Doug Sandstrom on the goals accomplished, totals accomplished, total savings, tax implications, I tell ya, and the results for various bond closing. Doug?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you just stated, I'm here to do an overview of the bonds that we have been refunding and refinancing over the last six months. I'm going to go over some of the previous council actions, savings results, and the implication of these, as well as touch on some potential future bonding refundings that we're going to look at, too. What we show here is an overview of the six bonds that we've recently refunded. You can see the majority of them started in March, continued, and then in, ah, I thought I heard an echo, started in March, and then we had a couple new ones that were done in, started in September. You can see our typical timeframe on the GO bond and the, I'm sorry, not the GO bond, the subordinate lead and revenue bonds, the community facilities District One, Centerra and Palm Valley, were about 60 days. That's about what you can normally expect on bond issues that come to council. 60 days later, we'll be closing on those. Two of them, the GO bond and the PIC bond, which is related to the stadium debt, took about seven months to complete. Because they involve the stadium, there was an IRS review of those. The IRS has a higher level of standard that they're looking at for anything involving stadiums. So those took a little bit longer. What we ended up on, when we were all done with all of these after this seven-month process, we show here is the purpose of the original bonds. They were anything from water wastewater in stadium to public infrastructure amongst our CFDs. The total amount of bonds that we refunded, where it's $181 million of bonds that were refunded. When we did these refundings, we did not extend the life on any of them, and on the Centerra one, for instance, we actually shortened the life by one year. When these items were brought to council in March, and then two of them in early September, the estimated net present value savings was about $18.6 million. Because of the timing when we actually hit the market, we actually ended up saving $27.4 million, net present value.
Oh, that's great.
Yeah, it was a great number, especially in the PIC one, when they came in and told us what the number was. It went up by $4 million in one day. So we hit the market on that one exactly where you would want to hit it. What does that mean for us? So I got up here, it shows what the annual debt service is, and then a column on impact. For our 2007-2008 general obligation bonds, what that means is we're going to continue with the council's target of $1.74 for a total combined tax rate. As the council has been informing the budget process, we were looking at having capacity of an additional about $40 million over the next five years. With $10 million of capacity next year, skipping a year, having $20 million, skipping a year, and then issuing another $10 million within that rate. What this refinancing done is it's allowed us to shift up the second to refundings, so it's within four years that we'll be able to issue an additional $40 million and stay within that rate. The subordinate lien bonds on the water and wastewater, those were refinanced, not for the savings there, but we were issuing new money, and because we were already issuing new money, it made sense to refund the bonds that were in there. The PIC bonds, I've got another slide that I'm going to go over and really show on that one, because that's the one, in addition to reducing debt and leveling the debt service, has the biggest impact on the general fund and our ability to operate as a city. The CFD items up there, the community facilities districts, for Centerra, Palm Valley, and Palm Valley's Community Facilities District One, are all savings that will help either maintain the existing tax rate, in the case of Centerra, at $2.44 per $100 of assessed valuation, which is less than the 270 target rate for that. And then the Community Facilities District One in Palm Valley Three, we're going to see an actual rate reduction based on current assessed valuation, so every taxpayer in those districts will see an actual rate reduction. As I said, I was going to go into a little more detail on the PIC, because that is the one that has a direct general fund operational impact. What you see off to the right there is the actual debt service table. The original is the debt service that we had in place that we ended up refunding. New is what that refunded debt service amount is. You can see, beginning in fiscal year 2020, that debt service actually levels off at $9.1 million throughout the remaining life of the loan. As council is well aware, we had started a set-aside program where we were setting aside approximately $680,000 a year, building ourselves up to that time when those interest, or when those debt service payments start to increase. Because of this refunding, the 2.4 million we've set aside today will cover all of that to bring us up to the $9.1 million, so we've met that operating reserve. It's actually short by about $62,000, but in the grand scheme of things, we're pretty much there, so we will not have to continue to set aside an additional $680,000 for operational debt. And on an ongoing basis, it'll be at that $9.2 million a year. And that is, on the savings you see on the right-hand side, the difference, that is the direct savings from the general fund which pays for these bonds. And those are the bond issues to date. A couple that we're looking at doing moving forward include three CFD issuances, Cortina and Cottonflower. If the interest rates stay where they have been, they have increased since the election, but they're still looking pretty good for us. Cortina and Cottonflower would have a direct impact on the rate payers and the tax rate that's levied. The Estrella Mountain Ranch CFD will have an impact on the standby agreement that we have with Newland Communities, so that the rate will stay the same, and Newland Communities will have less of a standby impact. And then the McDowell Road ID is paid for entirely by the members within that assessment district. A new state law actually allows us to refinance improvement district debt, where before we did not have to. And that would save the developers' money, help us have our contingent liability on that debt, and then help them to start doing some of the stuff that they need to do on that property to move it along. So we're working with them on getting that one refinanced. And with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
First of all, as a council, I think the best thing we ever did was set aside that money, okay, that we agreed to. And not only that, I think the best thing that's coming out of this is, we just saved ourselves $690,000, because this is general fund operating money that we've been setting aside, that can't be used for day-to-day operations as a result of that. We've just saved ourselves two years now of an additional $690,000, or $1.3 million roughly. Now that can be gone to some of these newite things that are going to be hitting us very shortly towards our day-to-day operations. So this is really great news. What was that number, 24 million, 27 million?
27 million.
27 million? Great job. And again, you know, I want to thank the council, because it was a council decision to set aside that money so that we had it when that principle comes due. And if we ever get any money, and again, I say if, we ever get any money from the Tourism and Sports Authority, then we're ahead of the game. So we're covered. So I think it was great financial strategy. It was great to set that money aside, and I think we all deserve my hand, so thank you. I appreciate the good news.
Well, thank you, Joe, for your part. And Councilman Stip?
You know, I would say I'm excited about saving $27 million, so that's awesome. I think just to piggyback on Councilmember Pizzillo's statements about the set-aside and how we've, you know, structured that deal, that I think there's a great deal of misconception in the community that we have financed that ballpark on an interest-only loan, like many people did on their homes back in the mid-2000s, which isn't the case. The deal was structured specifically to pay the interest upfront and then go in long-term on the backside without any change to the overall length of the deal. So the fact that we can refinance those now, as opposed to if we had done it all upfront earlier, might have resulted in something slightly different. So I appreciate the tenacity of yourself, the city manager, and everybody that's worked on this to make sure we get them down. It's just very, very exciting, and it's almost one of those things that you would be speechless.
Yeah, I agree with you. I agree with you. Any other comments on this?
I'm speechless.
Yeah, I'm speechless, too. But we're going to clap one more time.
Yes, that's exciting. No, that doesn't happen very often.
No, it doesn't happen very often. Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda items. Do we have any cards?
No, Mayor.
Is there anybody in the audience that wanted to? All right, well, let's just go on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read consent agenda items 6.1 through 6.5 by title only, please?
6.1, approve the October 2016 and FY16 year-end budget transfers. Item 6.2, approve the issuance of a forced main easement agreement for private sewer line facilities located within Commerce Drive to benefit property currently owned by Duke Realty Limited Partnership and Indiana Limited Partnership. Item 6.3, approve a 90-day extension of the Estrella Mountain Ranch parcel 9.8 final plat approval, extending the approval date to February 21st, 2017. Item 6.4, approve a replat of lots 1, 2, 3, and Track B of the replat of Palm Valley Phase 6. Perimeter West final plat approved on October 3rd, 2011, consolidating approximately 12 acres into two lots generally located at the northeast corner of Cotton Lane and Indian School Road, subject to stipulations. Item 6.5, accept the dedication of the water and sewer easements, along with the approval of the Southwest Gas crossing license associated with Estrella Parcel 9.8.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to be moved an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone from the council?
Question.
Yes, one question, Councilman Osborne?
Just a question on 6.3 and how it relates to 6.5. I guess the question is, why are we needing to approve a 90-day extension if we're going to be approving the issue in 6.5? Is it just a matter of paperwork and timing? Is that the reasoning?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, you may.
Councilwoman Osborne, we just didn't want to assume that you would, in fact, approve that agreement, so we wanted to make sure the plat approval remained in force, just in case the agreement needed to be delayed.
I see. Okay, thank you. That was all.
Councilman Stip?
I had a comment on 6.4, and it was ironic, because I just drove it this week, this weekend. I had the opportunity to drive Indian School and the 303, now that all the construction is done and whatnot, this past weekend, and it is exactly what we needed for that particular area, and that project would not have been completed if it had not been for the Sun Belt guys. And they're willing, that's not true. Yeah, okay. But any case, we were able to advance that roadway project because of a great partnership that we have with them, and I was great, I was very appreciative of that when I got off the 303 as a gateway into the city to have that improved. So I wanted, I was trying to figure out how to say it, and then saw the agenda, I'm like, perfect, 6.4. So thank you.
I really appreciate those positive comments, but we need to do a motion in a second before we talk, unless you had the one on Joanne. Did you have the one on Joanne?
Yes, the one on Joanne, 6.3. And she got part of the question, but is this extension, this 90-day extension, related to the one we just did a little while ago for 90 days, or are they two separate things?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, you may.
Councilman Pizzillo, this is the third 90-day extension on the same parcel.
What's going, what's going on?
It's the ongoing discussions that Newland and the city have been having with Southwest Gas. It's a third-party jurisdiction that's kind of delaying the ability to get the plat recorded.
But that's what 6.5 is.
Yeah, but I guess my question is, we've had three of them?
This is the third one, yes.
Three 90s? Are we going to need another one? I'm just wondering, is there anything we need to do to try to speed it up with Southwest Gas? That's what sounded familiar to me, that we'd already done this before for a 90, and I always assumed that when we asked that, that's enough time for them to come to some type of conclusion. And if this is the third, then it's not a 90, it's been 180, so I'm just wondering what's kind of going on there.
Mayor, Councilman Pizzillo, we are, have been, Karen has been very diligent, our city legals office has been very diligent, working with Newland to iron out the details of the easement agreements with Southwest Gas. So every, anytime there's a revision to that easement agreement, essentially three different attorneys need to review the document, and since we're at 90-day increments, that's why this is the third time it's come before you. Our hope, as Karen stated, is, should the council approve the other agreement tonight, that's a little bit later on your agenda, that will totally satisfy all the requirements, and the plat should be recorded soon. That's our hope.
So what we do later on today, or later on on this council, should take care of this within 90 days?
Yes, sir, that's our hope, assuming there is no other changes from Southwest Gas, but our hope is that this is the final, the final item, the time it'll be before you tonight.
Yeah, the only reason why I ask is, it kind of feels like Groundhog Day, but that's okay. You know, I mean, if we can get it this last 90 days, we'll be good.
We want it just as bad as Newland does.
All right, with that, could I have a motion in a second, please?
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Stip, and a second from Vice Mayor, oh, Councilman Osborne. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 6-0.
All right, 7.1 is to consider the non-podable water use agreement in Newland Communities. Deputy City Manager Dan Cotterman, Executive Manager Assistant Mario Salamondo will present, and please hold your questions.
We are here tonight to present for your consideration an agreement between the city and Newland for what we call the non-podable water system in Estrella and for the conveyance of effluent. The agenda for our presentation this evening is we're going to go over a few key terms that we think would be helpful for those in the audience or those listening from home to understand what's in scope tonight. We will briefly talk about the history of the non-podable system and reclaimed water in Estrella. Mario will then provide an overview of the agreement that we're asking for your approval on tonight, and of course, we'll be here for any questions that you might have. The two key terms that we wanted to cover, first one being non-podable water, this is any water supply that does not meet drinking water standards and is typically used for outdoor uses like irrigation, lakes, and other water features. Effluent is water that is discharged from a sewage treatment plant or a wastewater treatment plant, and depending on how that is treated, it can be used for a variety of purposes. The one that the city prefers is to recharge the aquifer, but the other is for outdoor uses similar to non-podable with lakes, irrigations, and water features, et cetera. And then the city treats our effluent to a degree called A+, and that's important because that allows it to be used for those different purposes. The system tonight that we're talking about, the non-podable, includes the private system that fills the lakes and then irrigates the large outdoor uses for the schools, the homeowners' association, the city park, as well as all of the city right-of-way medians. And that water is supplied by two private wells, and then we are also producing effluent at our Rainbow Valley wastewater treatment plant that's contributing to that system today. It's important to note that the system was designed for one operator. It is not easily separated between the lake amenities and the irrigation system. And then we talk about the public water system in this agreement. We're talking about the effluent or the treated sewage that is coming out of the Rainbow Valley Plant, which was added in 2008 to the non-podable system, and then there is a desire to add the effluent from Corget in 2017. On slide here, we are showing some examples of the public use of the non-podable water in the Estrella community. We're showing a couple examples of different right-of-way uses, some with the median, some without, and then also the Foothills Park. And then I'll turn it over to Mario to go over the terms of the agreement.
Thank you, Dan, and thank you very much to Mayor and council for the opportunity to present the agreement to you tonight. My portion of the presentation covers the current state, the summary of the agreement, and also related fees. Currently, currently, Newland is the owner-operator of the system, and the city is the customer. So this agreement formalizes that relationship. It establishes fees for the water that is sent to the city for non-podable use and provides general terms. Currently, the non-podable system is largely not metered, and this largely applies to the medians and the right-of-ways. So this agreement provides a plan to meter these areas so that the city can properly account for the water that it uses. Currently, the city conveys treated wastewater from the Rainbow Valley Plant to Newland. So again, the agreement formalizes the role of each party and establishes the fee that will be, that's related to the conveyance of that effluent from Rainbow Valley. And lastly, the city sends the Corget effluent currently into the wash. Newland is in the process of seeking approvals from the county to add the effluent from Corget into the reservoir so it can act as a source for the non-podable system, so this agreement will enable them to do so. of each party, and it also establishes fees. That third bullet, it addresses the costs that have occurred in the past. So we took, we looked at those costs associated with the effluent that was sent from Rainbow Valley to Newland. We also looked at the costs associated with the non-podable water that the city used in its system, and essentially, those costs were considered break even. So this agreement recognizes that and establishes those fees moving forward. And lastly, the system is to be metered. There's a plan in place so that we can meter the medians and right-of-ways associated with the city's use. This takes us into the last slide, which is about fees. Newland pays the city the effluent conveyance associated with sending effluent from Rainbow Valley and Corget. It's about $3211 per month. The city will play, pay the flat fee of $1,200 for the non-podable water that it uses in its system, and that flat fee is based on four years of data that looked at similar medians and, that are metered in the city, so they're very similar to the landscape that exists in Estrella that's associated with the 50 acres of medians up there. So that total was agreed upon. The city pays a metered rate of $256 per thousand, and lastly, the city will pay $25,000 upfront to help accelerate the meter, the work that's associated with installing those meters on the right-of-way. The balance of the meters will be paid with the funds that are due to the city for the conveyance of wastewater. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards? Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then could I have a motion to approve an agreement between the City of Goodyear and the NMP Non-Podable Distribution Company LLC for the use of reclaimed and non-podable water in Estrella? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Lortano and a second from Councilman Holman. All from council discussion. Councilman Stip?
One of the things that we didn't talk about in the presentation that I think it's important for the public to know is, why are we able to use effluent in Estrella Mountain Ranch and we're not using it anywhere else in the city?
Mayor, Councilmember Stip, as I mentioned, it is the city's strategy to use effluent to recharge the aquifer. However, that decision was made in recent time, maybe 2013. Prior to that, the city thought the highest and best use for effluent was outdoor use. And so when the development agreement with Newland's predecessor was signed, the city essentially let them use that for that purpose. So we are, that is why.
In 1980-something, right?
I believe.
Yeah, so for the, for the public, I think it's important to understand that this agreement is, is that 40 years?
It's been a long time.
Thirty, thank you. Yeah, yeah, and I think that the current strategy is the best strategy, however, the agreement is the agreement. So I appreciate that, and the public needs to understand that. to understand that this is different because this was 1986 and not 2006 or 2016. So thanks for the presentation.
Thank you.
I'm going to decide first. Councilman Osborne?
Thank you. And I was actually looking at that, just that specific issue, because I was thinking, you know, the next item on our agenda is that Water Master Plan. And it was like, okay, these, in theory, these aren't exactly meshing. So I appreciate you bringing that up, Councilmember Stip. The other, the question that I kind of had, so currently, there's two private wells that I understand, and, you know, we're looking at this partnership of how it works. But what about the future? I mean, is it only going to be covering what we're discussing right now and for future growth? This isn't part of that. This is just for the current areas that we're using it for. Is that correct? Or how do you address this for the future?
Mayor, Councilmember Osborne, the agreement allows for the system to be grown, if you will, as new medians or right-of-ways come into being. Although it doesn't obligate them to use the non-potable for those new areas, it does allow for that. And at some point, when the system reaches its max capacity, we'll have to move over to potable, but it will-
Or we do something where we think about what our master plant's, water master plan says compared to, okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Councilman Pizzillo?
Just for the general public, we had a thorough presentation, I guess, at some point on this, just so they know that you've probably not seen the typical questions you may have on that, but it has been thoroughly been, at least from my perspective. So just want the public to know that that has happened as far as this agreement is concerned.
Thank you for pointing that out. Nothing's done. Anybody else? All right. Well, I think then that we're going to vote on this. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. It's a relief to see that is completed. Don't you agree?
Yes.
All right. 7.2 is to consider adopting the 2016 Integrated Water Master Plan. Water Resource Manager Mark Holmes to present.
Thank you, Mayor Lord, members of the council. I am very excited to be before you this evening to discuss the Integrated Water Master Plan adoption. So on November 7th of 2016, the city council participated in a work session with city staff and the Corolla Engineering Team to discuss the Integrated Water Master Plan. I'm going to give you a short presentation this evening to cover a few key elements of the plan with the council's direction and staff's recommendation for plan adoption. Also, we appreciate council's direction, your comments, and the validation of the work. I would also like to acknowledge that the Corolla team is here, Lisa Freestone and Richard Humphries in the audience here to address any questions you may have as well. Integrated Water Master Planning provides comprehensive recommendations. Integrated Water Master Plan creates value by looking at the one-water philosophy where potable water, wastewater, or reclaimed water all have equal value. It was an effort that required collaboration among many city departments and city leadership. It developed an understanding of expected growth, estimated needed flows, and developed a water resources plan. At this time, I would like to recognize and take this opportunity to acknowledge the many hours of staff time from each department that invested heavily in the project to ensure its success. The level of support was outstanding. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank the city leadership and council in supporting this project and your leadership. And I'd also like to recognize the outstanding work by the Corolla Engineering Team. They are truly top-notch professionals. As you recall from the work session, the Integrated Water Master Plan was composed in two phases. Phase one was the development of an existing infrastructure needs for our current existing customers, and was participated and guided through by a water planning committee. The second phase looked at infrastructure and water resources needed to support growth. You probably recognize this map. The plan looked at the future in planning horizons of five and 10-year planning horizons, and needs to take us through build-out and shown through the general plan. The city was divided into five planning areas. Water Planning Area 1 is the area served by Liberty and the Epcor Water Utilities. Solutions for, I'm sorry, the city was divided into five planning areas. The growth in the next 10 years is expected to occur only within Water Planning Area 2 and 3, and solutions for Water Planning Area 4 and 5 will include new opportunities with regional collaboration that include ground and surface water options. A key element, and I underscore key, identifying the plan is the need to develop a solution for bringing surface water to the city in the next five years. We identified this need as an unavoidable reality needed to support the general plan. We saw that around the year 2020, we start reaching the physical limits of our groundwater. We also saw the value of the reclaimed water increases by being able to bring that water back to the tap. Currently, we're recharging that water in the aquifer and recovering that water through our city wells. In the future, additional options may be available to us. Finally, the role of conservation is a strategic, as a tool that supports growth through better sustainability. With most opportunities in outdoor use, if you recall from previous presentations, 60% to 70% of our total water use is outdoor. So a few changes can make a large difference. This is a low-hanging fruit. Quality of life does not need to be impacted, perhaps even enhanced by small changes. The Citizens Water Conservation Committee is working on developing recommendations over the next two years, and we'll be bringing those recommendations to you. The Integrated Water Master Plan developed five options, if you recall from the work session, that could bring surface water to the city. Staff shared their initial criteria for selection. Council provided recommendations for establishing partnerships with stable partners, and also the city should be able to control its future. Council also recommended to staff to present the pros and cons of each option. Council also recommended that staff look at the impacts of not bringing surface water to the city, which we will call option six. Council input on the criteria was of great value to the staff, and we sure appreciate it. So staff is looking at the six options, and we'll come back to council in the near future on a work session to discuss the options and get council's direction on moving forward with a final recommendation. At this time, we are asking mayor and the council to adopt the Integrated Water Master Plan to be the reference document for developing and implementing water resources and infrastructure solutions to support the city's development identified in the general plan. And with that, I or Corolla would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mark. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? And council, I'd like a motion, a second, to adopt the Integrated Water Master Plan as the framework for the current and future city water resources and utility infrastructure needs. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Holman and a second by Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion.
Pizzillo.
Pizzillo. Sorry about that. So we have a motion by Councilman Holman and a second by Councilman Pizzillo. I've got it right. Open for council discussion. Councilman Osborne?
Thank you. Well, thank you, Mark. I really would like to let our citizens know that our staff and the engineers really put together a plan that is vital to our city. And, you know, this is a time that holistically, our whole state is dealing with a water issue. And sitting on AMOY has really opened my eyes to so many more of the issues of water than as a native I truly knew. And, you know, working with our drought contingency plan for the state and really the one-water concept is very big. But I know that the things that we discussed are important at the work session, that, you know, our city being able to have partners that allow us to guide our own destiny is critical. And I think that, you know, I know that right now, this is something that we can't take our eyes off of. And so I appreciate all of you working hard at it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Sean. Vice Mayor Loretano?
For the public that may have not tuned into the work session, it also was about a 300-page book. So the staff was very, very thorough. That's why if you don't hear a lot of questions, we all took the time there. It's like what Councilman Pizzillo was saying. It was very thorough, and I want to thank the staff. It gave so many different options and so many different ways to move forward, and it was very comprehensive. So I think we really do have a great foothold in this area because without water, we're not going to grow. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilman Pizzillo?
Again, I want to thank you and your staff. Doing an excellent job. Again, the page, you don't want to go back over, but I agree with Councilmember Loretano. But it's even so important, the CAP offices even, again, I got to throw those kudos out because I shared it with the mayor the other day, that they even have children putting out videos and had my two girls in there, my two grandgals, actually doing a spot for the CAP on why kids think water is important. So that was kind of neat to see her out there on YouTube as part of the kids' push, how water is so important. So again, everybody's starting to realize, this is it. If we're going to grow, you got to have water. So again, I please all, appreciate all your efforts, and I appreciate us being out in front of this. Instead of being reactive, we're proactive, and that, to me, is really critical. So, thank you.
Councilman Stip?
Yeah. Great job, Mark and everybody. It was interesting. I had the opportunity last week before the Geared for Growth presentation to monthly meeting with development community here in the valley. And I started talking about the ability for us to start getting water. And then all of a sudden, people's heads started picking up, and they were a little bit more interested in maybe looking at what was happening in Goodyear and the Southwest Valley because of the ability for us to bring some water. So it is really key. And I think because of that, I'm going to do something that I hate to do, and I'm going to repeat myself and say this is not just a Goodyear water user problem. This is a city of Goodyear problem. We need to be looking at it holistically. But thank you for the work.
Yes, Mark. Everybody finished with your comments? Councilman Holman?
I appreciate the emphasis we placed on water because I think of all the topics that we've addressed, or that I've addressed at different meetings over the last three years, water has become significantly more important and has taken over a great deal more of the conversation. I think it's very important for citizens as well as cities and the government to acknowledge that we have to get serious, and so we do appreciate very much all your work.
Thank you. Well, I think with the Water Conservation Committee, that is going to spread the word around to our community. I want to thank you, Mark, and I want to thank all the departments that have helped with this in Corolla. It's a great evening to have something done, all right, and on our way to running water as we should. So council, the discussion is done. Let's vote on this. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll go to 7.3, to consider amending the City of Goodyear City Council Meetings' Rule of Procedure. City Clerk Maureen Scott will present.
Good evening, Mayor Lord and council members. The item before you is to consider amending the City Council Rules of Procedure by adding future agenda items to the information items section of the regular meeting agenda. This is just an example of page four of our agenda for tonight, and I wanted to show you where it would be appearing on the agenda at the bottom under information items. During the October 21st work session, council discussed having an opportunity to bring future agenda items forward for future discussion. And per the Rules of Procedure, Section 7.1, it states that an item may be placed on a council agenda if by the mayor, the city manager, or three council members. And adding a section to the agenda would give the council an opportunity to add agenda items for future council meetings for consideration. And so this would satisfy Section 7.1 of the Rules of Procedure. So the item can then be brought back on a future agenda to discuss to see if the council wishes to pursue it. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? And would you please, city clerk, read Resolution 16-1773 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 16-1773, amending and adopting the City of Goodyear, Arizona, City Council Meetings' Rule of Procedure previously adopted by Resolution 00-740, amending Section 6.11 relating to information items listed on the regular meeting agenda.
Thank you. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Loretano, and I heard a second by a low voice, Councilman Stip. All right. Open for council discussion. Vice Mayor?
I think this is a good idea that we can get the information forward because I know, like, unless someone came up with something really crazy, I'm always willing to be the third one because it's so important that someone wants to have it discussed. I think it's always good we discuss it open. So I think this is a good idea.
I'm relieved. I think it's a great idea. That means when you have something you want, it means I have to go around and find the three people, or the three people have to find me, or no, any three can do it, or one, I can do it. I think it's much nicer to have it, you're going to be able to have your say, you'll be able to be able to express your ideas. And so I think it's whomever came up with this, the final decision, I'm bringing this forward, was that you, Councilman Stip? I appreciate it. Thank you. Any other discussion on it? All right, let's vote on it. All in, I need, all in favor, say aye.
Mayor?
Mayor?
Mayor, we need to do a roll call vote.
That's what I, oh, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Holman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 6-0.
By the way, it did say all in favor, but-
Well, then that's my mistake.
Yes, yes, okay. So let's go on. We made it through this meeting, right? Okay. Council, you have any comments or accommodations or activities you've been in? Yeah. Councilman Osborne?
Well, first of all, today I was able to go to our fifth grade winning class for the Goodyear Reading Challenge, and it was Mr. Munoz at Mabel Pageant. Their class read 33,000 pages, and so they were quite excited. And I, of course, did my handshake lesson with them. So that was a lot of fun. The mayor and I did attend and the city manager a really awesome water summit that was to do with the Salt and Verde Rivers. And that was, that was very, boy, I don't know how to describe it. It was, it was-
It was in dip. It was very good.
Yes, it was. And I tell you, just the need and the discussion around water these days is quite thorough. And I have to give some kudos to Brian because he had said to, as we were all kind of in a town hall sort of format, giving ideas and thoughts, and Brian had said, you know, the other way to look at it is, you know, what if we don't do anything, and what does that cost us? And so, you know, that was something that I think held true that everybody saw. Also, Mayor, if you don't say it, we attended the opening of Domino's Pizza over there in Cannon Trail Center. So that was, that was really cool. And I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving this week.
Thank you. Next, Councilman Pizzillo?
I got to enjoy Turkey Day a little earlier at Palm Valley Elementary School. Got to run across Mario there. Got to eat our Thanksgiving dinner with a group of rowdy kids. I got to go twice, two dinners, actually, two luncheons, one at the earlier one for the younger one and one for the later one for the older one. So that's a good event they put on. It was well-attended there at the school. The cafeteria was packed, and they have to bring them in in sections because there's so many parents that actually participate in those events. So again, hats off to the elementary school. Great job. And it actually ran pretty smooth. Got us in and out, and they had so many coming in and out. So I got a tip of the hat to them. They did an excellent job.
Councilman Stip?
Trying to think if the pension meeting was last week or the week before, but I think it was the week before, week before. So, but last week, I had the pleasure of presenting the civics discussion to the Boy Scouts.
The Boy Scouts, good.
You what? Yeah. So that was always very interesting. And just kind of a little side note, it was, they, the, one of the questions that they- the, one of the questions that they asked was, what would, if you were this, if, knowing what you know now, what would you tell yourself at this age to that whole group? And that was a really difficult, on-the-spot question. And of course, I sounded like a, you know, an old, you know, stay in school, but anyway. If you're, if you're going to, if you're going to go to a group of young folks, and I think that's where their heads are at, so just be prepared that, what would you tell yourself if you were, you know, 13 again, or 10 years old, or whatever? So, but it was a lot of fun.
I was going to say, they don't want me there, no.
Don't call ya.
Anybody else? No? All right, just to quickly review, I was at the Vets Community Connection Launch Celebration. It's an initiative to provide a channel for returning veterans, active service members and their families to connect with other veterans in the community and help find and find access to key services. So we have a number of groups that now are forming. But I think the ultimate will be when they all be funneled out to Luke Air Force Base into the new Veterans Building that is going to give them all the resources they need. Again, thank you for mentioning about the water, and you're really getting into water, Joanne. You're going to be our expert. I want to depend on that. The ribbon-cutting ceremony for Pure Patio, does anybody know about that? It was on Western Avenue. Absolutely fantastic store. So, yeah, I want you to all go visit the store. It's just amazing. It really dresses up Western Avenue. It's just kind of a, I think, beginning of a new movement there. So please go over and see that. And also, the ribbon-cutting ceremony at Domino's Canyon Trail Town Center, people are, people are enjoying it. They ended up having more business than any other Domino's in the...
They said second in the...
Second in the, in the valley, and the first one was Tempe.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so you can see the need was there. And again, the 2016 Geared for Growth event, where we heard a lot of exciting news, a lot of things that you counsel, counsel have been a part of, and this year's economic development activities. So, Michelle, thank you. The audience really, they just loved the presentation. Tell your staff that was just marvelous, very, very clever, original. I'm going to give you a hand of applause for that.
On the big screen.
And the big screen, and I have to tell you, the number of people that have come up from the other side of the valley who've stated that they're bringing their family here to Goodyear to see the movie because of this theater. They were so impressed with it, and stating it's probably the best in the valley. So we're going to get some tourism. It may not be overnight in the hotels, but it will be in our movie theater. So congratulations to that. All right, so it's over to you, city manager.
Mayor, members of the council, I don't have any follow-up items unless I missed something. The announcements are, happy Thanksgiving to you, your families, so, and our thoughts and prayers continue to be with John Campbell as well. And thank you to staff also. Enjoy Thanksgiving with your families, and it's a, it's a great time for that. As a reminder, our city offices will be closed this Thursday and Friday in honor of Thanksgiving and will reopen on Monday. Emergency services will not be impacted. I, myself, will be staying in town, enjoying family. Winette will be your acting manager from tomorrow through Sunday. So if anything comes up, please contact her. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Stip, you had something?
Yeah, I had follow-ups for the manager. Is that okay?
Yes, sure.
Okay. So our next meeting is December 5th, which is the manager's review. And we got the information in preparing my responses to the HR director. It would be very helpful for that discussion if we were able to get the Trends Over Time report that compared the last, the last employee survey to this employee survey, so we can see those trends over time. It said it was included, it was on, under a separate cover is how it was introduced in the document, and I think that would be very helpful for us for that discussion, if we can get that.
We will, I'll talk with the HR director to see what we can do.
Okay. And then, secondly, I don't know if anyone else has been experiencing problems with their iPad downloading stuff, but a while ago, we received an update that we were looking at a different form of electronic device to keep this going. Have not heard anything back, but it's getting really problematic that you can't even download a one or two-page document without having to reset the whole thing and go back. So I think we're, I know we're experiencing this in my home. My wife has the same version, and she's having the exact same problems, but I think we're beyond the usefulness of the 2010 iPad, you know, six years later. So can we get an, at some point, an update on what's going on with what the plan is?
Has everybody been having trouble?
I have.
You've been having trouble. I haven't had any trouble.
I think Wally has also.
See, they're sending it to their house. I'm trying to download it on here, and I can't.
Oh.
So I, that's why I say I think we're having a...
Okay, all right.
These are failing.
Okay, misunderstood.
If I may, and if you do have problems, please let us know, and we will make sure that we get technical staff to help out and look at, is it time to replace or what the issues are? But thank you for letting us know.
And I'll finish. Lastly, I just want to, again, Joe mentioned it, keep Wally and her husband in your prayers, and hopefully she'll be back soon, and that he'll be back home and well again. So the next meeting will be a special meeting on December 5th, 2016. The next work session and regular meeting will be on December 12th, 2016. And to the audience, have a wonderful, wonderful Thanksgiving. This meeting is now adjourned.